We'll start. We'll start the October eleventh twenty three meeting. Committee of the whole meeting with the.
April.
April, what did I say? That was a test. The town has a respectful knowledge that's located in the first people's traditional lands. Recognize the traditional territory. Uh to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today we uphold our own responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the trees with all the ancient temples and nations like all this place home. Town expresses gratitude to the opportunity to build a center community on sacred lands and generations to come. Okay, I call the meeting in order. We have any changes or additions to the agenda? If somebody want to uh. Well, the agenda.
I'd like to move that committee had dropped the committee. Agenda for April eleventh twenty twenty three as presented.
Any comments or discussion? We want to vote by half?
It's already out here.
So on the screen.
Was it? Well, there is. Oh, so we're gonna vote for or against. The six people for. So now. Okay, any council members? Citizens? Any delegations or presentations? Now we start with the one dollar. Whistleblower policy, please.
And the chair and I will pass this one right over to Ms. Hope.
So before you is the whistleblower's policy. I don't have too much to add other than what's in the report. I have been a general overview of other municipal. And fellow representation and. But it's pretty decent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a simple question. In the uh policy itself, it mentions. Essentially, the the. The procedures would be established uh. In conjunction with the C A O. And I think for myself, that's where I didn't see a lot of detail. I guess my understanding was it's probably not council's place. That probably doesn't fit within policy. Is there anything that admin wants to sort of say? That assumption is correct. We won't see that.
Uh to the chair, if I could. Yes, at this point, we're not bringing forward the directive, but the directives typically come on the tail end of the. Uh council approved policy to pass the intent. Any procedures or necessary operational steps. Related to implementing that policy will be approved by the N and shared.
Thanks. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
No, sir.
So yes, thank you. Uh to build on that a little bit then, so um. This is all gonna be done internally. Is that correct? Or is this third party? Uh what's the process look like? Somebody's got an issue. Do they come to you? What's the process of this thing?
So through the chair, so those will still be developed, but the the process essentially is that any wrongdoing. Uh as defined through the policy will be depending on who it is. If it's wrongdoing. On behalf of any staff member. Uh you can without retribution, report that to the C A O. If it is wrongdoing on behalf of the C A O, then you can submit your allegation directly to council. At that point, council will have a decision to make as to whether. How will they deal with that if it's frivolous or thrown out? Or if there's some some validity to it, uh we do have the option here that's uh for external investigators. And that's really gonna depend on the nature of whatever allegation is being made, whether that. Be fraudulent or uh assaults or or whatever the case may be. So. Um but it is council's responsibility to hold the C A O accountable for any wrongdoing, and it's my responsibility to hold. All other staff responsible for any uh wrongdoing.
I have a couple of questions. Six five. Should that really be any person? Should that be any employee? Said need to complain directly to. An elected official should be informed of this policy, then the policy must be followed. If it says employee, then it makes sense. If it says any person. And um I mean. That's kind of what I do. The public comes to me and they talk to me, but for an employee to come and talk to me about a problem that the town has, well, then I. Send the boundary of the proper channel. So I think there's a. Is that correct or is that just a table?
Good question. So I did use the term. Perfect and intentionally, so it wasn't a title, but I see what you mean. The intent of six five was if someone was not an employee and. Reached out to you, want to use the whistleblower for like a council code of conduct. Then this gave you the ability to direct, whether it was employee or person to the proper process in the proper direction.
I'm mainly under comment then. This eleven one. It says that every four years it's gonna be reviewed. I don't know if anybody else thinks this way. My preference is to have a sunset clause rather than a renewal clause, because renewal clauses, we always seek to uh. Inadvertently slide on by. So then the policy just keeps going and going and going. Some set clauses with four years and you have to, you wanted to continue, you have to. Nobody else feels that way. That's fine. We marriage or you saw the renewal. I said, policy on the policy.
Through the chair, sorry, just one comment to uh to six point five. It does specify any person, but just define as the person making the allegation can be anybody. I mean, this is more geared towards. Internal um whistleblowing, but it doesn't shut the door necessarily on the fact that any person. If they do witness or see some wrongdoing that they could make a a complaint through this uh through this policy.
I mean, just declare, so six point five is. Similar to what we're trying to do with him listens is there's a proper process to go through instead of going to. Us as like the officials or staff, but then they go through that process and it kind of disconnects them uh. Ourselves from that process and directs it to 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 the C E O and where it goes from there. It's that. That's the intent of six point five. So it could be a community member, could be an employee, but that's the process. That's what we're gonna start to. If 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 we pass this, the the process would then include directing them to that fault. Okay, thank you.
Oh, council of large.
And and I guess to build on your second comment. Uh I guess I actually like this policy in place and and I think. We'd be better served in um. In maybe missing one review that is opposed to having it go away and not having anything in place. Would be my feeling as it relates to the sunset clause for this one particularly. I'm with you on most things. But on this one, um I think they have something in place to allow. Uh people to come forward and and to um and it just it covers. Uh significant infractions, but to to have a channel for somebody to do that, I think is important. So I'm. I'm comfortable with a with a review as opposed to sunset clause for either.
I I just have a quick question, um and maybe this will come later, but at the time that this was. Um directed, there was some talk about a uh impact to the budget possibility. I don't see that in here, and I do know that. Other uh counties and municipalities have gone through the route of hiring a firm. That if and when uh uh this whistleblower policy was enacted, it would go through that firm. And then it would then also be vetted through whether it was was um uh frivolous or not, but. Are we not looking at that or is that something that we come forward later or we're just looking at this fully internally?
Uh so through the chair to the rest of council. There is a possibility that it will. We we don't know for sure, but we we plan on just simply piggybacking any possible investigations into our current processes. Because we do have, you know, um through the code of conduct, we do have to have somebody that is going to be available to conduct. These investigations through that policy. We intend on just simply piggybacking it onto that process as well as a number of internal administration. Uh possible investigation. So I don't anticipate that this will increase. Costs necessarily now, of course, if there is an allegation and there's um. A a requirement to investigate, then it it certainly will. That will be a budgeted up or that will be a budget expenditure, but. Okay, we we don't know for sure if they are going to urge anymore to add this as a a possible. But we don't, we intend that these types of allegations will be very rare.
Okay, thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something that I I support. Uh I believe it's important to have this in place so that uh. If an employee feels that there's been wrongdoing in the organization and they're. They don't want to be concerned about their job if they're reporting. One of their their superiors or or uh something like that. I do have a bit of a concern though, and that I I'm not really. Like I understand that it's reiterating that nobody's gonna be punished for reporting. Improprate behavior. But for me, it's not telling me how that's accomplished. So I'm not. I'm not sure. Maybe that's something that comes in the whistleblower directive. Yeah, I'm not really sure if administration can speak to that. I'm just, I'm not sure how that's that's achieved.
Sorry, council. This was. The protection from any retribution or punishment, is that what it was?
Well, that's kind of the intent of the whole policy, right? Is that if somebody brings something forward, they're not gonna be subject to. Revenge, retribution, anything like that, but I'm not really understanding how that's achieved through the policy. Like, it's reinforcing that. Whistleblowers won't be, but it doesn't to me, I'm not, I'm. May maybe I'm missing it. To me, I'm not seeing how that's achieved though. So is that gonna be part maybe in part of the whistleblower directive? Or? That's what's missing is for me is the process. When we originally talked about it. Way back when, there was gonna be an independent third party. Person, organization that was responsible for those reports being going to them. And then that is, so the idea was that's how the. Person was protected from retribution. They wouldn't be anonymous, but they'd be anonymous to the organization. Is my understanding. So that's why I'm having a hard time understanding how this protects the whistleblower.
Okay, so so the question is in relation to the protection that emanated. Emanent, correct? Yeah, um and and that would be further developed through the um. Through a directive of saying, you know, it will be submitted to this person. It will be in a sealed envelope and and those types of operational details. Those are typically the types of things that are located in that directive. You know, so so those are to come and those are to be developed um. But we don't have the exact details of. How, but you know, the the intent of the policy is to set the direction um. As long as we know the direction, you know, those those types of details on how we accomplish councils and tenants on protecting anonymity, we can. Uh we can look at these details.
We get Mr. Chair, thank you.
Colonel Michaels.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. My question was exactly related to Council Stashik's point. I didn't research any other. Policy to cross reference them, but should we potentially consider waiting? To develop those processes and putting them in section five point two two, which. Is the section where the C A O will establish those processes. For uh the allegations to be made. I just feel. With changeover, if this is gonna be a longstanding um. Policy for twenty twenty five, thirty years. That could change with whoever is at the helm of the organization. So. That process to me. Unless I'm convinced otherwise, should be in this policy to say this, this, and it's not at the. Uh you know, it's not arbitrary to whichever C E O is. Uh representing our organization in twenty thirty and twenty forty, et cetera. So that that's my same question as Council Stashing. Uh that I see that it's spoken about, but should it be in the policy or can it be in the policy? Is my question.
So through the chair, um. It's not proper process to try to mix uh the policy and the procedures, and it's it's important that you have the two key separate. Um you know, because council is responsible for one and administration is responsible for the other. So typically. Proper policy should be drafted in a way that divorces the two. Now, they are um. They are married at the end of the day, and when you are looking at possibly implementing this. Policy, you know, whatever. Whoever is making the allegations would be looking at the directive for the specifics of, as I mentioned before, who I submitted to. Uh you know, what information is possibly required by those types of operational details, but I don't think that. The procedure should be part of it. If council would like to consider the policy alongside a set of directives, we certainly can do that. Typically, in my experience, municipalities don't do that just because we're we're debating the policy at that time. Um and we just don't wanna make, we wanna make sure that I think this is a fairly safe policy. But just typically, if we're looking at the possibility of implementing the policy, we don't wanna come forward. And no, number one, develop a brand new policy and a whole set of directives for something that is not necessarily um. Not necessarily approved or supported by the council.
Yeah, I have a question first. Um these kind of policies actually work. So um there's a couple of things I'm thinking of. One is uh. The protection of anonymity and whether people can truly be protected with these kind of policies. The other is uh some of the allegations are a little bit uh on the, I don't know how you say subjective side. So like a criminal activity. Okay, that's fairly straightforward. A few of those are very straightforward, but some of them is kind of subjective. So there's a tenant soon. On the side of uh employing uh some people to uh. Maybe overuse this as a tool and this becomes a. A bit of a weapon. So what's the history of these? And I I I ask that because a lot of organizations don't have these, but a lot of government organizations have them. So. Why is it important for some organizations and not important for others?
So through the the chair, I'll let I think here pass along, but I I would say that our responsibility as an organization will exist with or without the policy. There is protections for whistleblowers. I believe that's through federal legislation. Doesn't apply. But I, you know, I think as a responsible organization, this is a necessary process, and I I'll say that it it protects. It. It's there to protect uh the whistleblower for allegations made in good faith. Uh now, if there are frivolous requests and if uh. They're making a request because. You know, something that's uh clearly frivolous that doesn't necessarily protect them. You know, I I think that's a fairly high uh high bar, but. It the intent here is to protect and to make sure that there's a process in place for people to voice um. You know, to voice their concerns when there is wrongdoing to the appropriate channels without fear. That they're going to be losing their job or for any retribution. So um those organizations that don't have this policy, I certainly recognize that they have them. Um I think this is important. Uh. You know, and I think this is also transparent and it shows that we're, we would take these things seriously if they do.
You hit all the notes. The one thing is it's possible that if organizations don't have a whistleblower program, they may have other avenues for complaints. But just aren't called whistleblower, or they may rely um upon employees to make complaints to. Um other provincial bodies and then investigate through that route. But this is, this kind of policy goes a long way to showing um transparency and commitment to employees. Um I come from a private organization where they did have a whistleblower program. Um and it it was well advertised and a lot of education went in so that employees knew that it was there, um but it was not quite the utilized. And although I haven't seen anything formal in a while, um. The utilization rates of whistleblower programs are generally high.
Um, thank you. Um and and not be argumentative, but to build off of what Mayor Michaels was talking about, I mean. The only end, actually what Council Stashik was saying, I mean, the only element to this thing that makes any sense is for there to be some way to act people and step forward. So I get that in most instances, a separation of directive and and policy uh makes sense, but. I just, I'm just not sure that it does in this. I mean, if 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 we don't know what we're talking about. This first, let's just skip this and go right to the directive. I mean, it 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 and and. It's kind of. The intent of this is to protect people from. Administration, from the organization, from the internal structure. So I just, I I guess I'm not sure how. This thing is of any value if there's not some. Uh meat built around the bones of of what it would look like if somebody stops or steps forward. This is a different type of. Policy than almost anything else we're gonna look at. I think. My thought.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I really, I just have a question that I find I'm making a direction, I think. Um just for the C A O, I I just like confirmation that really what councils has before us today. Is making a decision on whether or not we're pursuing this policy. Following that, council has no hands on what the procedures look like, because that is an H R. And an internal organizational directive that doesn't get filtered up to council. Can you confirm whether or not that's accurate?
That's correct. I mean, you know, to to the degree that council's involved, you know, I'm certainly involved in any input if there's issues with what we provided, but. Generally speaking, you know, those would be under the purview and that'd be my job to just indicate what the uh the steps are on. Upholding the intent and what is dictated by council through policy. Yeah, of course, if there's any discrepancies or if council sees an issue, um we can have that conversation, but but that would be under my.
Uh to that end, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the recommended action, please. The committee directed administration to return the. Whistleblower policy to future council meeting as presented. And if I can speak to it, please. I certainly, I I understand the concerns that have been echoed around the table. I'd also like to know what. The the specific procedures are for any, you know, uh any employee who might. Uh need to utilize the the policy as a whole. Uh but I can I can accept that that is an internal procedure that's developed by administration. And trust that our C A O and and his staff will develop something that's fair and reasonable because that's their call. Uh in this case, I think it's council's responsibility to make the first step that we wanna see a whistleblower policy. That's what we're being asked to make tonight. So there it is.
Does that read the way you like?
Um yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh next was uh Mayor Michaels. Is it related to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. Um. Perhaps. Uh I've thought of a compromise. I'm I'm okay with the procedures perhaps. Uh being formulated by administration. I consider section again five point two point two. Could we add? Something in that section that is under the directive of the C A O to. Make sure that the process includes complete anonymity. For. Um individuals who are whistleblowing, because the point is. There might be processes where somebody just doesn't want to even tell the C E O in confidence. And I I want to guarantee that we move forward in a direction where, whether it's a third party, I don't know the mechanism. That'll be brought to council if there's budgetary constraints, but uh I would like a process that that creates complete anonymity. Um to all whistleblowers outside of anyone from the organization and. By adding a section that that is within the C E O's uh processes to uh establish. Would would that be a compromise where you don't have to be specific, but it's under section five point two point two that complete anonymity. From the organization is achieved, and then you can work on those process of what that looks like. But it's just not worded in there, and I think that may alleviate if that was the will of committee adding a section that explicitly says that uh could that fit there? Uh through the chair, absolutely. So uh I'd like to make an amendment uh. Mr. Chair, uh to um seek consensus. Actually, I'll be in administration if I wanna make an amendment to this before. Voting on Council McGoon's um recommended action, how how would you prefer that I go about that?
Through the chair, through the chair, just because the consensus was put forward. Now, I think through a procedural by law, we do have these um. These uh processes a little bit relaxed, but I I would recommend that you possibly ask for a a friendly amendment. Or or possibly to withdraw the the motion, put forward a consensus to shape the policy and then put it forward as.
Just for the sake of clarity, I would I would ask for for the motion to be withdrawn, then I can make uh an amendment to the actual draft and then a a future motion if. That's okay.
Okay, we have to go with that. Uh all in favor of withdrawing any? Okay, the amendments withdrawn, face proceed.
Uh I'd like to uh. Give direction to amend section five point two point two. To include. Complete anonymity. For. All whistleblowers. And again, um. I'll leave that administration's direction on how to craft that section, whether it's. Uh added to uh after D, but just something in that section which establishes a process that. Uh make sure that there's no any, that there's complete anonymity. So I'll lean on administration. If a simple direction like this. Is enough to give administration that latitude to. Bring this forward uh at the next council meeting with the. An amendment that represents the intent of what I'm trying to seek. Without words mentioning it today.
Yeah. I know your next uh council stash. Is it related to this?
Uh no, I'd rather. Any time with action. Yeah, I just draw and wait and see what happens with this.
Any comments or questions on this council?
I do have a question, actually. So my my first blush is that I would agree with something like that, but I do have a question for. Uh our our administrative folks, probably. Miss Hope, I would, I would imagine. Um. I sort of hesitate. When we have a process that allows anyone to issue a complaint with complete anonymity. Uh because then you lose a measure of accountability if it's frivolous. You know what I mean? I I I guess what's the best practice is my question to you.
So um the only word that gives me pause is complete, because there might be situations where, let's say, this was a violation of law, and then we can have both. Anonymity, but generally how these are made is it's. Or um in a whistleblower can choose to not be anonymous so that they can participate in the investigation process. So um. Just complete might not be something that we can leave them into.
A council, Mayor Mike.
Thank you. Uh if I could amend my direction to remove the word. And again, I I I just. My intent here is that uh I want to eliminate any future procedures to just focus on. Going to the C A O. To to report. I just want a third party involved somehow in order to give that anonymity is what I've heard. From many organizations, including ours, is that. Even if if there's big faith and we have a policy, some people are just not comfortable. Telling somebody in the organization itself, uh specifically the C A O. Um and again, this is building a policy for long term. I'm not assessing anything at the moment. Thank you.
Those are related to this?
Yes.
Council of work.
So I guess my question would be um. Uh if if we were gonna use complete, then it would necess necessitate a third party. So would you sort of envision the the opportunity for the employee to sort of be able to? So, would you sort of envision the the opportunity for the employee to sort of be able to? Do one or the other? I mean, I'd like to see as much of this done internally as possible, if possible. So. I just, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that, uh, if if somebody is willing to go to the C A O, I don't want to exclude that either. I I want the option. And if they're not comfortable to go to the C A O, uh, could be at the director level, if it's just below, they have that option. To 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 go through that, which. Um, the C A O alluded to that, uh, they will be looking into that procedure of 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 creating that. That makes me feel better, yeah.
Yeah, and and I guess in 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 administration, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in my experience, the anonymity is more so. The person that the allegation is against, that the person that has the allegation against them. That there's anonymity, that that person does not know who made the allegation. The organization itself needs to know that person, like they need to, to in order to be able to, but that's. I I and I could, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but. You know, my experience is that's the anonymity that we're trying to, so there is retribution, there is no. Um retaliation by another employee if a employee then uh made an allegation, correct? Because even the. If an investigation is done, they can't say who who did this, because that's the anonymity that we're we're striving for. But as for the person taking it, they they need to know, we need to know who that is, the organization, that's correct.
Uh, through the chair, yes, the the intent of whistleblower policy isn't to keep whoever is making the allegation anonymous. It's the the intent of whistleblower policy is to protect those who come forward. Uh, from any retribution from making those allegations.
Right.
Um, now, through the policy, we will, we do accept anonymous. Uh, allegations, uh, you know, based on if they meet the criteria where it's a serious threat to an instability or anything. We will accept those, because, you know, I think we have a. You know, moral and a the obligation to to look at these things no matter what, if they're of a serious nature, but. The intent is not to keep them anonymous. In fact, we. I actually encourage people not to be anonymous in that process, but the intent is to protect those people.
Um.
Since the amendment belongs to all of council, uh, before we remove the word complete, does anybody have any objections? Okay, let's remove the word complete, and now we're finished with the amendment. And then they have a motion they wanted to make now. Let's vote on the amendment.
You gotta read it out.
Needing direct administration to administer section five. With good anonymity for all whistleblowers. Uh, move forward against, please. That's your unanimous. Hey, any, uh, other motions or comments, questions, uh, Councilman Stashik, you were next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the amendment we just passed makes me a little more comfortable. I'm, we'll see what comes forward as a as a as a motion, but. I'm not sure I'm comfortable supporting this as a policy. To come back to us at this point, for for me, it's it's too vague. I don't. I don't know what the process is, and I honestly still don't. I I'm I'm not comfortable that a whistleblower is going to be free from retribution without knowing. What the process is when a whistleblower complaint comes forward. And and having them. Have complete anonymity. I I that 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 they don't support for sure. They have to be involved in the investigation process. But for me, anything that's internal to the organization. To me, it just can't be unbiased. There's. Personal interactions, there's. People that know each other in the organization, and I just, I can't see how if the. Reports and the investigation are internal in the organization, how it can be impartial. And how the anonymity of the whistleblower can be guaranteed. The only way I can see it. Is that there's an independent third party that whistleblower complaints go to, then that third party can do an investigation. They interview the complainant, but people on the other side of the. Investigation don't know anything about it, they don't know who it is, they don't know how the complaint came forward, none of that. And they may never know, the investigation can be complete, but the report just says whistleblower A doesn't identify. Nobody's ever identified by name, so even after it's over, whatever comes out of the investigation. That person can carry on, they're in their position in the organization without any. Judgment on them by anyone else in the organization, because there, it's not known who who filed the complaint. For me, that's, that's what's missing from this policy. I I need an understanding of how the process would work, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question for administration, I mean, clearly I've heard from. A number of our fellow counselors that they would like to see an idea of what this would look like. In practice, so did I hear you correct in saying that this is something that if it was the will of committee? Uh, we could look at in tandem with a directive that had been assembled by. Uh, administration prior to finalizing the policy?
Through the chairs or the rest of the committee, I think that's what's needed here. Like when when this policy is brought forward to council, I think that there needs to be some comfort from council that the process is going to be sound. Uh, so we'll bring those forward in tandem for, uh, currently council to.
Thank you.
Uh, appreciate that. Uh, I I guess the question also is, is, I mean, ultimately, in situations like this, there is no. Guarantee, um, you know, because I. I'm gonna use my own personal, I'm from an organization, we don't use an external, we use internal when that happens. Um, it really boils down to the person that is being whistled on, if that's the term. A lot of times, I think they can put two and two together, it's, but it's up to them that they have to keep it confidential. They're not out there, so I guess my question to administration is, when you bring back. Uh, and and I'm hearing that in combination, that what would be then? The part of the procedure that if. Person A whistled on someone, someone then did. Uh, retaliate, assumed who it was and retaliated, that would be part of then. What would then be the consequences to that individual if they were to to, um. It to take that behavior, right? Like, because I think that sometimes, yeah, a situation happens and you start to think, oh, I know who this was, right? You don't necessarily have the name, but that would be part, I'm assuming, of the the procedure that the administration would be looking at as well. To try and guarantee, I guess, as much as possible.
Yeah, through the chair, and I don't know how typically any directive is not going to specify to. Getting into the what ifs, but typically it'll say that anybody who violates this policy will be subject to. Um, subject to disciplinary, which. May include, but is not limited to termination, for example, typically that's what you'll find in a directive, but it won't. Um, you know, and of course, there's no guarantee, no matter what is up for the process. You're you're dealing with humans and humans act differently in different situations, so you're never, it's never going to be perfect, but I think a good set of outlines of. Um, trying to uphold the intent of what we're trying to achieve here is 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 our goal.
Thank you. Oh. I think I support this, like when I look at the upside, I didn't look at the downside, I mean, the upside is complicated and debatable as to how much it's important, but. Uh, the downside is, uh, is this anonymity, potential cost and potential weaponization. But the the real purpose of the whole thing is to bring out, uh. Uh, some wrongdoing that's going to drastically affect the organization, I think, I think of an example, uh, in the past where that would occur, and the benefit from that. The benefit of that provides something to search.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think I support this. Uh, I will support this, I would like though. If there's an appetite to continue Counselor Ostashik's concern, which I also share of. Having a third party option. It's not, it's it's covered to some extent under section, uh, five point two point two. The adequate resources to be made available to support all investigations, so I assume that that's gonna mean. A resource which would be a third party, but it doesn't say explicitly that. Person A will have access to that. We're developing policies that may be. May touch upon it, which I I hope it does, but again, do we take the same approach as the previous direction and we add? That the C A O's responsibility is to establish a process that, uh, uh. Uh, includes a third party as an option, I don't know what that language is, but that would alleviate that. Again, maybe there's not a will of committee to add that, this might be enough for today, but I. I, again, um. I I think the language should be captured, if we want that option. For somebody to not go to the C A O, and they could go to third party if. Do we want that language in there? And that what is what I believe is missing. If there's no appetite, then we leave it and we, you know, look at it in four years, and it's still a great start, it's better than what we have, but, uh. It's still not outlined, I agree with Counselor Stash, Stash, it's not outlined in five two two. That, uh, that's gonna be there, so it may not be a case, but I'll 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 support it as as it is if there's no other, uh. Support to change anything else. Thanks.
My comment, uh, my comment, and my comment would would be, I'm not necessarily, um. Convinced that it has to be external, I think that, uh, we have trusted people internally that could maybe do that, and I would leave that up to the C A O to. To sort to sort that out if he thought we needed that for protection of the person. That is, the key to me is that this person comes to a trusted person within the organization.
Uh, thanks, uh, and and my extension to that, I think with the amendment that was put forward. Um, I think we've said to administration, they probably got the message now and said they would return this. In conjunction with the directive, so I think we have enough now to to share with.
With that, I'd like to move that committee direct administration to return the attached route of support policy to a future council meeting as an amendment.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, maybe I misunderstood, I I thought I heard Nasek say that it could be returned. With the directive, not that it would be, does that, does that need a direction? From committee, that the directive is one started?
Uh, through the chair, we can certainly provide a. A direct or a consensus, but this will be returned with directions. I I think I. It's clear to me that that's that's a. Something that council needs to feel comfortable in, when looking at this process, how it will work.
Go back in Q two, please.
Original Q.
So I do have a, I I I know it's probably early for process questions, but want to try and be able to. Head off any future questions before we get too far down the path. Uh, to administration, I guess, what happens in the event if if the policy doesn't include a mandatory? Or even an optional third party investigator, what happens if the complaints against the C A O? Or what happens if there's a complaint made? To the C A O and the C A O decides. We're not gonna investigate that, but the whistleblower feels. No, this is important and it does need to be investigated, what's the recourse?
So through the, um, through the chair. Any allegations related to the C A O, I I will not see for this, any C A O will not see that go directly to council. For council to review. Um. The second part of the question is more or less an appeal process. Um, that I'm not sure about, um, but my my assumption is that. Uh, if it. They would be able to go to council if the C A O is, uh, negligent in addressing. Uh, wrongdoing, because now that's no, that's now the C A O is liable for whatever. He or she has done in that situation, so, uh, I guess it would depend if it comes forward, I say this is frivolous, and somebody believes that it's not. And that I'm, and that by doing that, I'm, uh, trying to cover up some kind of wrongdoing. Well, that's now a complaint against the C A O as well, and that would be forwarded to council.
So with the directive, clarify what the investigation procedures are then? Am I speaking for myself as a counselor? I would have no idea how to investigate a. Complaint of wrongdoing against the C A O. So is that something that's part of the directive?
Yeah.
And would it be the same? Regardless of council or the C A O deemed that this was not a frivolous complaint, then that it bears further investigation with the investigation? Process be the same regardless of whether it was initiated by C A O or council?
That's correct. I I I don't see any nuances in investigating me versus anybody else, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's the race.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, um. Under five, five point two point one, when this comes back to us. Sorry, five point one point two, when this comes back to us. Will there be a list of disciplinary action with council? Or the options the council has if they have to be disciplinary against you?
Uh, through the chair, I believe that we have. Outlined, um. We have outlined what that would look like, and I, it's removal from any position of responsibility, termination, termination of a contract. Um, and other disciplinary. Leave, um.
On page one.
Uh, this is on page one and two. Um, public or private apology, education or training, removal. Of an employee or volunteer from any place where they represent the municipality, including community board or corporation. Removal from any position or responsibility and goes on, uh, and any other disciplinary. Actions that, uh, may be appropriate given the circumstance.
Thank you.
Any other problems or questions before we vote? Okay, shall we vote on the question?
Oh, it's there.
Okay, let's vote forward against on, uh. The committee direct administration to return the. Vote policy to a future council meeting as an amendment. For or against? Okay, that's passed, all seven in favor? Any more comments or questions on this? Okay. Let's move on to, uh, welcoming inclusive community policy.
Thank you, through the chair, to the rest of the committee, so a little bit of background on this, uh. This started with the previous council in August of twenty twenty one, uh, it's. Uh, a welcoming and inclusive policy was brought forward at the time a motion was made to have. To bring it forward to the strategic planning of sections. Now, the policy itself wasn't brought forward, to my knowledge. Um. But from what I gather, these types of discussions were had at the strategic planning session. As strategic priorities of council, um, and that has made its way into. Uh, council strategic plan and a core principle of being inclusive, so, um. But this policy itself wasn't brought forward, so I didn't see the. The motion is being, uh, seen to completion, so it's coming back forward to council today to have a discussion on. Uh, this policy, um. Bringing it forward, it doesn't specifically outline initiatives or anything that the municipality does. Or has to do, but what it does is outlines our intent and auto priority of. When we're doing business, as the town hinted, that we will apply a lens for accessibility. Uh, make reasonable accommodations where we can in order to make sure that, um. That we can remove barriers to have our services accessible to all inhabitants. Um. That being said, I don't have anything else to add. With the exception of one of the benefits I do see of, uh, this type of policy is. With the exception of one of the benefits I do see of uh this type of policy is. Which there's been a real push, it's specifically from the federal government on um. Equity, diversity and inclusion, and that has actually been built into just about every federal grant opportunity that we've seen. In the last um. Uh, few years, so I I do think that this is important and alignment specifically with the federal, but also with the provincial government. I think this will. Um, provide some assistance when going through that process, but um. If there are any questions from committee, I'd be happy to advance.
Counselor Stash.
Mr. Chair. Administration, is there any further work that needs to be done administratively? Other than having us come forward regularly and be adopted?
Through the chair, I'm not sure what you you mean, but uh I don't have that intent, no. And are any further working?
So if I may, just any further steps, any documentation? Basically, any work that needs to go along with this, what if council adopts it? So develop and letting our last policy has a directive. But does this have anything like that, any practices, any directives, any?
Not necessarily. Um, you know, this one isn't, I would say. My intent was not to bring forward directives and implementation of this policy. I think that is. Um, outlining through policy, our intent that this is important to the organization was sufficient to um. I I didn't see the need for accompanying directives specifically on this policy.
So the intent of this policy, it's just. My understanding that it's it's kind of just a high level. Guiding document that when other policies. Bylaws, procedures are developed, this is kept in mind to make sure that we're adhering to. Inclusive practices and developing all the other things that the organization develops.
Yeah, that's correct. It's it it's dictating what the organization's priority is in. Uh, equity, diversity and inclusion, um, any future bylaws, policies, exactly what you said, it'll be kept in mind. This is specifically important when we're developing, um, say levels of service or um. Uh, talking about service levels to make sure that we are uh applying that lens. Uh, when we are looking at doing that type of work. So so really, that's all it did, you know, once is our commitment to uh. To carry that over.
Mr. Chair.
My concern is always making any comment on this sort of thing is a weight mail. Is what I'm sure. As a weight mail and and I guess it's just uh because the 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 definition of reasonable. Uh, is different from person to person. And so, I mean, when 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 I take a look at four point two, I I'm just curious what sort of levels of. Technological um um concessions are to be made, what sort of transportations to be provided, what? Um, and then to extend that down into five point one point two, where we say we're gonna actually make. Um, our services available to a protected group, why? Protected class, why wouldn't we just say to all uh members of our community? Um, I don't, I don't know why we have to define a protected class and then we have to. Say that we're gonna, we're gonna go about being equitable to this defined group of people. When, when really what we should do is be equitable to all members of our community. So we've taken in this policy the time to define a protected class, and then we said, well, we're gonna do all these things for protected class where. Really, if we said that we were gonna do all those things for the citizens of Hinton, it would actually. Um, achieve exactly the same um thing without. Without necessarily breaking out a definable group to sit over there to be compared to. Uh, it's just, I guess I I put it out and and say, does that, does that make sense to to others?
Uh, please.
Uh, through the chair, um, I'm certainly not an expert on this, but I I believe we can try to. Our intent through this policy is that equity, equity and equality for everybody is not the same thing, but. Equity is what we've defined through here is saying that everybody will have equitable. Access to our services, not we are going to treat everybody the same, which um has the unintended consequences of. For example, if you have a physical disability, if we just have a pool for everybody, um, you know, we. We're not making reasonable accommodations or we're not treating people who may have mobility issues equitably. And we should take that into consideration when, say, buying the lift, for example. Uh, so I I think it's equity of opportunity to participate in in the business of the town of the. Services that we offer, not necessarily treating everybody equally, but making reasonable accommodations. Where we can to make sure that there's equitable access.
Can I just follow up? What if we missed somebody who needs that kind of? Consideration from our list of protected class? I mean, I'm not, and I agree with you about the difference between equal and equitable. And and so my point is that I think we need to 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 make those concessions to everybody. And if you miss somebody in our list of protected class. Are they not protected? Do they not get any special consideration? Or do we need to make sure we've gone through with an ex- an exhausted list? Of a protected class. I mean, it's for me, I guess, and and I agree with that, and maybe we need to use the word equitable. Um, and not equal, uh, but the 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 challenge for me. Is once you start defining things like that. And then you have to put a measure of reasonableness against it. Um, I I'm not sure where it ends up ultimately.
Yeah, I'm next. I too have concerns about protected class. Uh, my concerns about are by. Placing too many, too much emphasis on differences between groups of people. Uh, we actually divide people and it could have the opposite effect of what we actually intend, because those are left out. Any sort of special protection are uh are uh have our feelings and are irritated. And then along with Brian's uh thing, who do we include or exclude from protected classes? Seniors included in protective classes? What about uh just regular working folks who have to work from eight to five during the day? Are they part of the protected classes? Cause they can't access uh regular uh regular office hours during the uh town. I I would prefer that we not have. Protected classes and that we we are dealing with the citizens of Hinton or treating everybody. Equal and fairly. Principle should be, everybody should be treated equally and fairly in Hinton. I think Hinton is a uh. Uh, fair minded. And opened out and we celebrate achievement based on merit, merit, uh not based on uh. Other factors. Well, I find it problematic that we have a protected class there. Thank you. If there's no more questions, I have one more. What are we trying to accomplish with this? Like, what's the problem that we're trying to solve? Like, to me, Hinton is an opened and fair minded community, and every time we see an issue, we'll buy a. You know, a three thousand dollar lift with swimming pools, so a person can get access into a pool, or we'll we'll do these things naturally as they come up. So what's the special problem that we're trying to solve with this policy? Maybe whoever in the first place can explain or something. I don't, I don't, I have some understanding. So through the chair, the the intent.
The intent is just to outline the values of the organization's policy, that this is something that's important to the organization. I wouldn't say it's anything more. But, you know, it it is something, right? It is outlining that um. This is something that we we should keep in mind when we're developing any business of the town. Uh, to take a look at and make sure that this is uh that we as staff are unfolding the intent of this policy. Uh, now, to your point, I absolutely believe that in absence of this policy, we're going to be unreasonable and we're going to. Try to strive for all the things we've outlined here, but I I don't think it hurts to outline through policy with councils endorsements on. On any position um or any value that uh that council wants to have for the candidate.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, I I and I apologize, I don't remember all the details, but I mean, ultimately, I think that was the. Intent at the day of the day is we have nothing on record to say we are. Uh, you know, welcoming inclusive and we wanna be a a community that gets behind that, uh that has a specific policy. In regards to uh, you know, everything that's that's mentioned in the policy. So, you know, it's not that we aren't doing it, it's just we weren't. Necessarily promoting it, endorsing it in in the to this level. At our level of policy, and I think that was the intent at the time, um, but also to. I I guess, support administration as well as to when they are. Managing the town and then the day, day of the, when we're on in the town that we are keeping in mind. The inclusiveness of the of our of our of hintinites, but also people that are outside of hintin as well. To invite them into our community uh as that. So I think that was the intent of this and and I feel the. This has captured the intent of the of the day at the time that we were uh discussing it, so for various councils.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, my question for administration is. Uh, if it was the will of council to accept this policy, does this expose us to any more? Uh, economic impacts legally, if somebody came forward and said. Uh, you know, I'm part of this protected class and I feel like you've adopted this policy and you're not as a community. Uh, making accommodations enough for us. What what is the legal exposure to that? And then to follow up on that, I'll have something.
So through the chair, the legal exposure is um. Negligible. Um, you know, this has been drafted in a way that does not specifically tie the organization to anything. It's just that this is a priority. Um, you know, protected class uh with or without this policy. You know, that is outlined through human rights legislation. Uh, so so many of the the legalities. That may come surrounding uh anyone from a protected class or discrimination. Uh, that legality is going to be there, whether it be that's a policy or not, and I don't think it changes with the policy.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, I think so then, then to that end, I think the whole purpose for having a protected class in there is to. Identify perhaps not fully, but at least as a start. Those groups who have classically not experienced equality or equity within society. And so if there's really nothing else to be fearful of in putting forward a policy like this. I would actually be a lot more fearful of not putting a policy like this in and the statement that that sends. Unless there's some kind of legal exposure that I'm not familiar with, I'd rather say to citizens who haven't experienced full inclusivity to the town. Or to society as a whole over the years, you know what? You're welcome. This is a welcome town. We want you here. Unless, of course, there's something I'm missing where we're exposing the town to some kind of greater harm, I'm very, I'd be. Very happy to hear it, but I think as a start, this is a good policy. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Would like to make a motion, Mr. Chair? I would like to move that uh committee direct administration to bring the welcoming and inclusive community policy to a future meeting of council as presented.
So worded the way you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Counselor Stash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll be supporting the motion to have this come back to regular. I was. I'm able to vote it. This is already practices that administration already undertakes in their day to day. Processes. That said, I don't see that there's any harm putting it into words and putting it into policy. Uh, and that's why I asked earlier if there was any additional work that is going to have to be done. In terms of implementing this and seeing that there isn't, uh, we can move forward and focus on other things. Uh, how this is background information when administrations considering everything else they do in their day to day. So I'll be in support of it. I have no problem with it passing moving forward. Thank you.
Lewis? Yeah, I don't support it. We're not solving any problems, I have concerns over the word protected classes, I think we're emphasizing differences. I think that's problematic and counterintuitive to this policy. That, any more comments, Mr. Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll be supporting this, but if there's an appetite on the language, cause if it was really the first time I seen. It categorized as protected class and and incorporated within a document. Um, I'm open to any potential change. Sometimes it's just a word. Uh, the intent, I believe, is uh something that many municipalities are doing and I support it. Uh, so, but I'm also open to changing the verbiage. Uh, and and honestly, there are many, many, many ways to verbalize the intent of this, so. Uh, I I would just, I support it the way it is, but I'm open to potential changes either tonight or when this comes to regular on. Uh, finding the ideal uh way to communicate this intent. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually, I had a question about protected, but I saw the term. Uh, is protected class not? A term that's defined by another level. I I I thought it was defined in Human Rights Code or some type of federal legislation.
Through the chair, uh, yes, it's defined through federal legislation. The uh, sorry, human rights legislation.
Please.
So is this definition of protected class the same definition of protected class that the federal government uses? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and just to build on that, that's exactly, I'm looking at the Canadian Human Rights Act right now. For the purposes of this act, the prohibitive grounds of discrimination are race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, age, sex, sexual orientation. Gender identity or expression, dot, dot, dot. So in this case, it's. We're just following the best practices of federal law. So in this case, we absolutely do identify differences. And uh between individuals and why we don't discriminate against different groups. So again, I. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, let's vote for or against, please.
Chair, my computer is crossed.
Are you in favor? Okay, so that's six in favor and one opposed, and the opposed is Stewart Taylor. Any other comments or questions?
We'll move on to our. Uh, through the chair to the rest of the committee. So this is being brought forward today for um. Uh, with the recommendation that this be forwarded on to the next meeting of council, um. We're bringing this forward today for for two reasons. Uh, one is political and one is financial. We, when it comes to the uh political advocacy route, we do have. Um, we have been encouraged through F C N to uh support their position on this. A resolution has been attached for. Uh, for council or sort of the committee to look at and to uh. Decide at council whether or not this is something that we want to adopt or a position that we want to adopt. Um, when it comes to the financial side of this issue, we. We have a decision to make on when we want to pay this and I. And it's being brought forward because there's, there's a budgetary implication to this and there's also likely a. Somewhat political when we do pay. Um, so. We are recommending that uh we we support the Federation of Canadian Municipals support through the passing of. The. The passing of the. The resolution on page nineteen. When it comes to the financial aspects, we have to. We have a requirement through Public Safety Canada to indicate whether we want to take advantage of the. Extended pay options that they have provided. My my recommendation for council is that we we do. And we look to push this off as far as possible, um you know, I I think that it accomplishes two things, the first. Is it will allow the advocacy efforts specifically through Alberta municipalities to run its course, they. Uh their position remains that they would like the federal government to reconsider. Uh I don't know if they're going to be successful in that position. But we uh but I I don't think there's any harm in in waiting. And the other aspect to it, it's just simply financial where I I always believe that. Money is better off in our account than it is in somebody else's and we should keep it in there as long as possible, you know, we get uh. Minimal returns on our investment and at least that can offset the cost by thirty three thousand dollars, so um. We do, I do have an obligation to submit through Public Safety Canada by April eight, uh sorry, fifteen. Uh whether we want to take advantage based on our conversation here today, I. Uh regardless, I will make that submission through Public Safety Canada if the council decides otherwise and we'd like to pay in twenty twenty three. As per the original invoice, we can all hike over to adapt that, but I. But I'm looking for councils, uh any questions for council on this on this matter, and if there is any alternative political advocacy. Routes that we may want to take.
Not to be overly traumatic, but is one of our options is not to simply file through our our uh. Legal representation, the fact that we think perhaps this bill is outside the scope of our contract, we dispute the bill.
Through the chair. We certainly can, um if we were going to do that, I would get a legal opinion, but uh. My opinion and the opinion from the other municipalities, this is a legitimate cost through our municipal uh servicing agreements. Um we do have a contractual obligation to pay, and I don't know if um. I have my deltas, whether that's that would uh that would be successful.
If I'm interested, Mr. Chair. My only concern is that. I think in this instance. What's what's happening is that um without consideration uh for us as an organization. A not insignificant uh cost has been incurred by us. Not through any choice that we've had uh or any ability to negotiate, I. I I would think that that has some substance over the decisions we would make as a municipality, um you know. In previous budgets, because this is essentially being retroactively applied. As we set out, as municipalities go, we don't, we don't carry forward. Surpluses to deal with the retroactive costs that, you know, sort of have just been dumped on our plates. So I understand it might be a little bit um. I suppose unorthodox, um but like you had said, I would I would hate to sort of. Submit right away to the acknowledgement that, yeah, we owe this this money without sort of exploring all our legal avenues. Now, that's my only concern is if we hear from from our. Fellow F C M members and from legal that says, you know, that's just, that is not a legal possibility, I would be happy, but I would hate to not ask the question. Uh and then find out that, you know, simply by dragging our feet, maybe that brings our. Federal partners to the table a little bit, maybe that's going to be approached across the country, I just don't know. Thanks.
Those will large.
Um well, I. When I read from here, comment first and then uh I make the bunch of but the uh. The comments of the C A O are, let's wait and see what the advocacy is. I mean, to put the taxpayers and him. Uh liable for a legal bill that I'm sure the provincial government, the Alberta municipalities and F C M are all having a look at. Um is probably more than than needs to be done. Uh but I do agree that let's leave the money in our account that we have to take from our account, whether this is going to come from reserves or going to borrow the money. Um and let's let's leave uh the organizations that are working on this sort of complete their work first, I think that's the. That's the best way to move forward, and with that, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that committee direct administration may forward a report. On the R C M P retroactive cost to the next meeting in council.
Is that is that word the way you like?
Love the word.
Hey, also was to ask, you do have a question.
Uh yeah, question, comment, and I guess related to the to the uh motion. Uh regarding Council of Greens comments about uh. Uh considering legal action, I don't disagree at all. Uh I don't think it that it's an action I would support. For the town of Hinton to take on independently, but. You know, if there was another consensus request to. Send a letter to uh F C M to consider initiating legal ha- legal action on behalf of. All Canadian municipalities regarding the fact that this action was undertaken by the federal government. Without consultation with municipalities and the municipalities are the ones who have to foot the lion's share of the bill, I. Definitely think it would be worth consideration and definitely worth getting a legal opinion, uh I think a a class action though. From all the municipalities in Canada would likely carry a lot more weight than just hitting doing something on its own. So, yeah, maybe that'll come forward during this discussion and back and forth part of it as well, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? I got a quick question, so the federal government's gonna let us uh basically have uh till two thousand twenty five without any interest.
Through the chairs of the rest of the committee, uh yes, I believe so, uh what I received is that we will have up to two years. Uh no, they did not specify any interest, I don't, I don't suspect that that was part of it.
My other question would be, I can't remember, did we handle this during the budget in any way? Say we're going to budget this amount over a few years, how did we handle that during the budget at all?
Uh through the chair, to my knowledge, this was not a uh. We we did not budget for this because at the time we were waiting on a decision as to whether the whether or not the federal government was going to absorb these costs. So this has been outstanding since March of twenty twenty one, uh that we've been waiting for a decision on this, and we. We were um crossing our fingers and hoping that the news would be a little bit better and not through uh the federal budgets. Uh that was recently announced that they would absorb these costs. So this is an unfutured amount um as of right now.
Okay, if there's no more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. So if I understood correctly, if the C A O. Will put into place before April fifteenth, which is later this week, uh the intent for us to pay this. Or potentially exercise the payment for the two additional years, um do we have to bring this back to regular and if so, what do? What are we doing next week at regular with this?
Uh through the chair and the rest of the committee, uh specifically what I would like is a motion for council to authorize the. To budget for this amount in twenty twenty five and I'll provide any direction to uh pushed or. The entirety of the payments in twenty twenty five, and we would also be looking uh for council to debate the. Uh the passing of the res- resolution on page nineteen is uh solidifying a position of the municipality on. R C M P retroactive costs.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, no more questions or comments, shall we vote? Okay, please vote for or against. That's all seven in favor, uh we should just carry it, any any more comments or questions?
Mr. Chair. Uh have an additional. Incentive request to counsel. When this report comes back to to us for approval. There's a recommendation in this report that the five hundred thirty six thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty five cents. Be paid from reserves and that uh strategy is developed to pay that back to reserves over time. I think it's important that the repayment to reserves is obviously done through taxation. But it's got a termination point, if that's split over four years, it's fine, it's a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars over four years. But there's something defined by motion of council that at the end of that four years, that comes off the books, it doesn't just stay on. As part of our taxation rate that our citizens and businesses are going to continue. Paying to the town that just goes into general revenue, reserves are paid back at that point, so there's no need to collect that additional hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Per year, it's like to move to uh direct administration. Reserve repayment. Options. I uh. Short term dedicated taxation. Options. The in the report. Presented at the next meeting of council. And I completely mean that, so it doesn't make sense, or there's suggestions for improved wording will be. Consider. Sorry, Jim, I I see something, can you take out the second options word at the beginning of the second line? Uh I'm okay with that, administration's okay with that, it makes sense and the intent's understood.
Chair, I'm uh.
Okay, and committed to.
May I ask you a question? So what if we got a million dollars of surplus this year? And Mike comes out of the uh surplus to pay this. This says that we're gonna uh increase tax rates to uh leave this. And we've already had the taxes increased uh in previous years to pay for. Go ahead, please.
Super, you know, we haven't had taxes increased in previous years to pay for it, this wasn't considered during budget. We didn't know what bill was going to be. Also, we're not going to pay this until twenty twenty five, we have no idea if we're going to have a reserve come twenty twenty five, that's the recommendation from administration. So come twenty twenty five, the bill of five hundred thirty six thousand odd dollars gets paid out of reserves. I want to make sure there's a strategy in place, put that money back into reserves, but once it's put back, that that comes off the books. And we're not going to continue to tax businesses and citizens in the community for a debt that's already been repaid. That makes sense?
No, I'm in control of that.
So if I may. And I I I think what about the train of thought I'm getting from Counselor Taylor is. There may be other options we could pay this, whereas if we had, so this taxation is one option that council may have in front of them. But if we decided to say that we had a surplus, you know, whether it's a chunk of this year and a chunk of next year's possible surplus. That we allocate those funds to pay this bill. Is a possible option, this is just saying that if we were to go this option, then it would go through taxation and would have an ending. But is administration, I guess, prepared to bring other possible options on how to pay this bill? Other than through taxation and and paying off through the reserves and then and then through taxation to recoup those reserves. Is that the intent of uh administration or? I think that's what I I'm hearing what Counselor Taylor is saying.
Yeah, yeah, you can read, there's another more obvious option than the one presented there to me.
Through the chair, yes, um. You know, we're certainly willing to look at any possible option, you know, reserves or borrowing, in my opinion, make the most sense just because we have that. Flexibility when not through general taxation operational question, through something like a dedicated reserve for borrowing. I I won't be able to make a good recommendation today on what exact payment method. We should do in come twenty twenty five, because I think that's going to depend on a lot of factors uh based on interest rates, uh reserve levels, what else is going on? Um but but I certainly understand the intent is that we don't want to be uh. We want to avoid the situation where we're raising taxes in order to pay a bill and then we. That's simply just there in perpetuity and we're taxing for something that is no longer there, because it is just. It is a one time expense, so um I do understand uh. My. Part of my struggle is uh if we aren't looking at a specific strategy for one thing. My my preference is to look at this from a more fulsome uh perspective when it comes to. A a complete reserve strategy, um you know, because even though. I think uh you know, lots of the work that uh Alicia is doing in a complete reserve strategy and where. Where those reserves ultimately should be, I think that's going to play a bigger. To me, that that weighs heavier than ensuring that uh this particular. Item is paid off in a in a reasonable amount of time, so I would like to look at it from a more fulsome uh perspective. But I I I think we can do both, I think we can break forward options, I think allocating a dedicated reserve for something that we know is going to occur. In two years, I think is a smart move, um and looking at the particulars during that budget process uh to make any adjustments based on. Whether we will, whatever payment method we believe is the most advantageous to the municipality.
You, Mr. Chair, this this motion is just there, I just want to put it forward to. Make sure that this is an option that comes forward to council so that council, if they chose to go that way, would have some. Assurance that people are being protected from having their taxes increased on an ongoing basis when the original intent was just. Covered a one time expense, it doesn't preclude any other options, if somebody wanted to put forward. You know, the 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 recommendation that uh any budget surpluses for the next two years be. Put in a dedicated reserve to to pay this bill. I have no problem with council discussing with the people that I'm not sure I'd support it, but I have no problem with that being a consideration. This is just one option, I want to make sure council has the opportunity to to consider. And that there's some insurance there that if taxes have to go up because of this, they don't stay up once the debts are paid.
Does that miss you, Mayor Michaels?
That's okay. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll support this, uh this strengthens uh the report with uh in included option and next week. We can deliberate uh that with other uh things that compete against it, so I'm in support of it, thanks.
Just clarification from administration that that's exactly that, that this doesn't limit. The other potential options that admin will bring back in their future reports or budgets. No, it does, perfect, then I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, and I completely support this, I mean, it just, it sets a stage for administration that when they do come back to us as an option. Then this is included in that, we're not discussing it at that point, you know, and and the fact that.
Then this is included in that. We're not discussing it at that point, you know, and and the fact that doesn't exclude any other options, you know. Because I think this is something we need to look at various different avenues that might take what what best suits for our community. Uh when the time does come, if we if we have to pay this, uh we'll do that, so.
And I support it too, because if you're going to increase your taxation for a particular purpose to help go on in perpetuity. So I support it. Any other comments or questions? Would that could be voted on this? Okay, let's vote for or against. Okay, that's uh all in favor. The motion is carried. Any more comments or questions on that? Okay, we move on to the reporting uh part of the meeting. We'll start with uh Mayor Michaels.
Had the uh pleasure to attend um leader, the leaders caucus with CEO Fanasic. Uh I think Counselor Haas joined virtually, uh a big chunk of it is uh. Uh pertains to the upcoming election, May twenty ninth, with the premier and. Uh opposition leader uh speaking and a lot of the uh sessions or the breakout parts were uh tied to that. The Alberta municipality stance is uh continues to be on public safety um. Uh issues were in major cities that are trickling down in rural Alberta now. Uh so I would I would suspect that we'll see uh in this fall's uh. Uh convention uh resolutions pertaining, you know, pushing the government of of the day to uh. Deal with homelessness and mental health at a greater capacity and tying it in uh with policing. Uh and with that, Curtis Zabloski, who uh we uh met some time ago, uh did a great presentation. Uh speaking about uh the partnerships and uh he said, uh he said, I was surprised he said this publicly and. Uh but he said it strongly that the R C M P uh has no intention uh to not provide services. Uh here in Alberta and that uh from Ottawa, that that was never the intent. Uh there there were some rumblings that um. That even though there's a provincial interest uh to uh offer policing from a provincial standpoint. Uh that Ottawa also wanted to get out and he said the R C M P wants to continue and was very strong with his message uh regarding that. Uh and uh there was another uh session which I anticipate in the fall, perhaps getting some direction through uh consensus of A B munis. Uh regarding F C S S and the funding, uh and that the pressures again from mental health. Uh are downloading uh two municipalities having to deal with this and the province having to step up uh in in. Bridge municipalities and 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 providing new services that were already struggling supporting uh the services that we provide currently. That how are we going to tackle uh homelessness and mental health uh from a municipal standpoint and we need the help of our province to do that. Uh and Mayor Zahara gave a good update on the rail advocacy uh alliance and uh its progress. Uh as some members are going to Ottawa in the uh in the in the near future, um and that's all.
Move to race, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday, last Wednesday, I attended. In power, our to yell, and that's where Bernie, Pryor, and Natalie spoke on their vision of Hinton over the next forty years. I um I found it very informative. The audience participation was awesome. And I'll leave that out soon.
Thank you. Russell LaMarge.
Anything to report, Mr. Chair?
Of course, sir.
Yeah, nothing to report, thank you. Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Uh just one thing, in in I did uh mention the Leaders Caucus last meeting, but agreed with the, you know, the the. I I I closed the question both to uh uh our premier unfortunately was not able to answer it in the end to our also to the uh. N D P uh to the to uh opposition party, but. All of the monies to mental health and homelessness are going to the larger centers. Uh unfortunately, and it's not helping us in our municipalities. And in fact, my question too was, is and we're seeing it. In in services is it is taking people away from recruitment from our smaller communities. Because they're going to the larger centers where these programs are happening. They need to staff them. And unfortunately, it's now, you know, i- it's having a greater impact on our smaller communities and. Uh and it's it's somewhat frustrating, you know, that they talk about improving services, but where they really needed. Uh are not are not improving at all. In fact, they're declining. Uh so I'm gonna be interested to see, you know. What the future holds, but uh yeah, the the fact that they're forgetting our our small municipalities that are. Going day by day trying to manage and deal with and the thought is they think that these services are going to provide services to our smaller communities is is. I just don't understand that that uh that thought process, but a lot of advocacy for that, so uh. Yeah, as as Mayor Michael said, I think we, you know, we, of course, we we don't take any sides in the election, but how to promote what we want to see from. Those elected officials uh on the provincial level and and that public safety, mental health and homelessness is a big part of it, so. That's all that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Uh C A O will report.
Uh thank you, Chair. I have included a uh some operating highlights for the month of March, starting on page twenty. And if there are any questions on in relation to that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh questions on the C A O's report? Um I have a few. Did you have a any sort of update for us on the Airbnb uh by law? Action? Or activity on compliance with the Airbnb by law?
Sorry, uh Chair, I did not uh with me, but I can certainly provide that.
Okay, we appreciate it. I had another question too. Um. Fill in the potholes. Let me just start.
That's a great question that I haven't been here long enough to answer yet, uh but I can inquire on the date of that. I know we're. Hearing up for street sweeping and I and I have heard a a little bit about pothole patching in. In just terms of the material we're we're using and those kind of stuff, so I know it's being talked about, but I don't have a schedule. Uh I would have to acquire that.
Typically, this time of year, most stories.
I would say we're still a wee bit early and I you would think you would follow after this week.
Yeah, one final question. The Greg Avenue project, when will that start?
With the chair, uh we don't have a, the the next step is we just filed the notice of works. Uh when the on tracks come in for signing, that fee will come with the schedule, so we don't have that yet. Um the first step will be a pre-construction meeting and then construction, so we would get some communication notices out, but I. I don't have the contractor scheduled, but he is tied to a very aggressive completion date on this project and that hasn't been changed.
And that is?
Uh, John. It's sometime in July. It's, I'd have to look it up.
So the intent is to miss the busy period for the businesses on the street?
It was taken into account and there's a uh built into the contract is very set staging. The contractor's not free to come in and just open up the whole. Uh job. He is complying to do us, do a piece, finish it, do a piece, finish it, do a piece, finish it, to minimize the interruption. And uh we've worked with the business owners on that.
Okay, I only ask because one of the businesses was talking to me about it today. Thanks.
Yeah, and if you want to put them in direct contact with us, we'd be happy to talk more in detail with the directly impacted business, that'd be fine.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so that uh gets us to the close session. Did we have anything close session? Uh Chair, I believe that we have. All right, with that, we um hopefully go into close session. Okay, all in favor? That's worried. Any discussion? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Let's do it this way, okay? Uh can we please vote for or against my end of the session? That's unanimous. Everybody's in favor. With that, we'll take just uh should be, should we just go into close session and then um?
Let's take five.